Welcome. I'm calling to order this special Board of Ed meeting. It is 6:01. It is February 9th, 2022. We are in the Nashville North Boardroom. And we're here to interview Dr. Robinson. Ms. Raymond, can you do the roll call? Yes. All right. Good evening, everybody. Ms. Darling?
Here.
Mr. Claffey?
Present and alone.
Thank you, Mr. Claffey. Ms. Giglio?
Here.
Hi. I'm here. Ms. Raymond?
Go on.
Ms. Lampier?
Here.
Oh, my goodness. Ms. Brown?
Here.
Ms. Zeeem?
Here.
Ms. Johnson?
Present.
Ms. Bishop?
Here.
We also have our Director of Human Resources, Ms. Carey. And I'd like to welcome our candidate for Superintendent, Dr. Terrence Robinson.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you very much. So as we've been doing the last couple of nights, start off with a presentation. We have asked our candidates to put together a presentation. I will read the instructions in one second. We also have some questions from the students that are being posed during this time. So if you're reading a student question, please let us know. But to start off with, describe an instructional innovation or process that you have helped to implement that reduced or eliminated the opportunity gap for students of color, students in poverty, students from culturally diverse backgrounds, or students with disabilities, and what evidence supported this feel?
Thank you for the question. I want to also extend a thanks to the board for having me on this evening. It is truly a pleasure to be in Nashville once again. I have enjoyed my visits on today, and I'm looking forward to the dialogue on tonight. So I'm going to dive right in and just provide a brief introduction before I get into the question. And so this is a roadmap forward. I don't take for granted that this opportunity, the gravity of this opportunity, this is big. This is big. And this is a big opportunity for Nashville. And so I think I am the person that can get it right, and I hope that you agree with me at the end of this presentation. So let's get started. So the size of our dreams must always exceed your current capacity to achieve them. If your dreams do not scare you, they're not big enough. If your dreams do not scare you, they're not big enough. I am a dreamer. I dream big. There, I don't believe there's anything that I can't do as long as I put my full effort into it. If I prepare, if I put a plan in place, put a team around me, I believe we can get anything done. I don't believe there's enduring limits. But that's not something that's just achieved. That's not just a thought. That's a process that's been developed over years through trial and error, through experiences, through success, through some failures. We all fail, but we learn from those things. And so as a school support officer in the Houston Independent School District, I just wanted to kind of introduce myself first because I'm often asked, what do you do for a living? So first of all, I'm not a security guard. I've heard that one before. You support schools, so you protect schools? No, 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 no. I'm not a school officer like that. I supervise principals. I appraise principals. I support principals. I work with principals on a daily basis to make sure that their schools are functioning at high levels. But let me just take a second real quick and talk to you about how I arrived at Nashville. I have attended public schools all my life, all the way up through high school. You see that third little bullet? That's Cashmere High School. I'm going to talk about Cashmere in a second when I talk about the instructional focus. And in college, in the middle with the handshaking, that's Houston Tillison. It's an historically black college in Austin, Texas, where my son is currently enrolled as a freshman. I have my master's in education administration from Prairie View Anam University, which is also a state-funded, historically black college university, and my doctorate from the University of Houston, Gokougs, where I am so proud of the work that we've done in the city of Houston for providing opportunities for students of color and of diverse backgrounds. I have experience working in the Austin Independent School District as a teacher, spring high school as a principal, and the Houston Independent School District as a teacher, assistant principal, principal, and now school support officer. That's how I arrived in Nashville, is through the experiences that I've gained, not only as a student, as a principal, but as a person. Okay? I'm not here alone, guys. I brought my dad for a reason because I think it's important that you know my journey. I am a family man. I'm the little boy who's sitting on his mother's lap in that first picture. That's me. Okay? That's me. And I'm not afraid to show you some of these pictures that nobody should ever see. All right? But I'm human. I'm Terrence. Okay? And the second picture, I am the young man with the pink socks on. I didn't have much of a fashion sense. As I tell people, when they ask me, what were you thinking about those socks? I was just trying to match them with what my mother had on. That's my story, and I stick to that. Right? Fashion sense, I haven't had none at the time. In the middle, this is my immediate family along with my parents. Unfortunately, we lost my mother. It'll be four years in April. So this was our last family photo together includes my wife and my two kids, my brother, my youngest brother, and his wife, as well as their two kids. And of course, my dad, who is with me today, we are not twins. He is really my dad. And I owe him a lot in preparing me for this day. The next picture is my immediate family. They're a little older right now. My kids are 18 and 10. As you can see, my baby, she hates when I make her read and do homework. She doesn't like me because she knows I, you know, when I get over those faces, she doesn't think I have the patience to work with her. But my family, we love traveling. As you can see, we're at the Grand Canyon. And lastly, is the picture that my wife made me take when I received my doctorate from the University of Houston. That's Terrence. That's Terrence. That's important for me to say that to you because people see me as Dr. Robinson. I told someone today, I've never written that on paper. I've never written my title on a piece of paper because I am a human, and I want people to understand me as the person. If you don't respect me as the person, you're only going to respect the title. But I want you to respect the work that I do. So that's important for me. Let's get into this. I'm committed to greatness. I have a passion for work, respect. I live by the golden rule. I treat others the way I want to be treated, and I believe in accountability. I want you to hold me accountable, and in turn, I will hold you accountable as well. I believe that has to be a two-way street. These are the guiding principles for me. My current position, as I stated earlier, I am a school support officer. I currently support 16 elementary schools, approximately 8,000 students in those schools. They're diverse campuses, Hispanic and African-American students. They're all Title I campuses. They have some specialized programs such as Gifted and Talented, Fine Arts Magnets, International Baccalaureate, Dual Language, and STEAM Magnet, as well as Environmental Sciences. When it comes to my support specifically, I look at teacher feedback and coaching. I am a coach at heart. I want to make sure that the people that I'm working with are the same and coaching their principals to be better. We look at lesson plans, POCs, as well as observing at-bat sessions. And on the quantitative data side, student achievement data, of course, is number one, but also attendance, discipline, those other factors that affect student achievement. Let's talk about the innovation. This is Cashmere High School. Cashmere High School in 2018-19 was rated as the worst school for secondary students in the state of Texas. It was an improvement required eight years. So some stats about Cashmere High School. There was a new principal. He was an experienced principal, but new to this particular school. There were 777 students, 65% African-American, 35% Hispanic, 18% exceptional education. I don't like using special education. I say exceptional education. Okay? So that's what that means. 97% economically disadvantaged, 14% ill population, 76% at-risk, 31% mobility rate, which means 31% of the kids are new to the campus that year. That's high in the state of Texas. There was a consistent decline in enrollment. Nine principals from 2003 to 2019, nine. That's a 16-year period. That's an average of, you do the math, not long. Not long at all. And in fact, as I told you last time, I interviewed a young man who had four principals in four years. Four principals in four years. So it's no accident why a school ends up in a situation like this. We have all these factors that are in place, but the question is, what do you do? So what we did was, we tried to get down to the root of the problem. We tried to examine what the root cause analysis was for this particular campus. I asked for Cashmere. They asked me, what campus do you want? I said, I don't care about the other ones, but I want Cashmere because, hey, I'm tired of what they're saying about my school. This is the kind of pride I have. Okay? So we looked at the root cause analysis. We said classroom instruction was not monitored consistently with effective coaching, modeling, and feedback. That was one. Teachers and administration were not trained on instructional methods for ill students. Remember, 35% population, and that was growing for ill students. Okay? So it wasn't going down, it's going up. And then lastly, teachers and administrators were not focused on student data, on the individual student level regarding student growth, and goal setting. The accountability standards in the state of Texas are broken down by growth and achievement. Well, if you're not tracking that, how do you know if you're even successful? That's just use some common sense right now. So we said, you know what? If we're being determined by that, we have to do a better job of tracking that. So those were some of the root cause analysis that we determined. So problem statements. We did a lot of turnaround work here. Number one, classroom instruction was not monitored consistently. We talked about that. With effective coaching, that's on us as the administration team. Are we inspecting what we expect? Number two, teachers and administration were not focused on student data. We talked about that. We have to set goals. We have to monitor it. And then our ill babies, our babies that are new to the country. Now, in Texas, unfortunately, you know, we have Ls. The news shows us some of the ill babies that are coming from Central America as well as Mexico, but I'm talking about, just like you have in Nashville, they're coming from all over the world. Houston is a melting pot for cultures. So it's no secret that when something's going on in the world, guess what they're doing? They're showing up at your front step. So Afghanistan, principals, get ready because those babies are coming. That's just how it works. So solution. So these are some of the solutions that we highlighted to put in place for the turnaround work that we're doing. So when we look at leadership training, making sure that we're looking at differentiation, that's that big word. Oh, we servicing the kids on our campus. We can't service all kids the same. This is not a one-size-fits-all. It's not. We can't buy that cap and say, okay, let's just pull the straps back and, you know, we're good. It'll work. It doesn't work like that. It does not work like that. We have to understand what the baseline is. We have to look at each kid individually and say, what are the things that we need to provide for this student to make this student successful? Every kid. Number two, administrators and instructional staff will receive training on STAR progress monitoring. Now, STAR is the test in Texas. That's what our state test is called. It's the STAR test. So we had to look at the progress measurement. As I told you last time, you get points in Texas based on growth as well as progress. Are these kids, forget passing, we're not even talking about passing. Every kid can grow. Every single kid, when they start out at the beginning of the year, they should be able to grow, show one years of growth if they've been in school one year. That's just bottom line. But we have to measure that. If we don't know where the starting point is, we're not going to be able to measure that. When I was at Fairgrounds Elementary, talking to the principal, I said, hey, how are you tracking your running records, your reading levels? How are you tracking that? And he was so eloquent when he told me that. I was impressed. I was blown away. I was blown, I like him. I was blown away because he told, he led me, when I left there, I said, okay, he has his fingers on what he needs to have his fingers on. He knows the data points he needs, and that's the same kind of work that we have to do at this particular situation. But also, it's all about developing our teachers at the same time, and that's number three. We looked at book studies, the training for our students on the ELPs. That's what our EOL curriculum is called in Texas, the ELPs curriculum. And also the POC work, professional learning communities focusing specifically on our ill students, pre-planned lesson development is crucial. Are we practicing our lessons before they go live? Practice on each other because if you don't practice on each other, you're going in and you're giving a product to the kids who need it the most, and you're not getting it right the first time. You know how hard it is for students to unlearn information that they learned wrong? So why not practice on teaching those kids right? So some of the impacts, we divided it into impact levels. Impact one, professional development. Impact two, effective teachers. How are we investing in our teachers? How are we providing the professional development? How are we providing the coaching they need to be successful? Impact three, student achievement. Our kids have to be successful. One student told me, Mr. Robinson, we went from a school that was all about test-taking strategies to a school that was about interventions. How are you helping me? Not how are you teaching me how to take a test because that's not what it's about. It's about that long-term development. It's not about how you can get me over the hump this time because next time, I'm not prepared. And then at the same time, parental involvement. We have parents in this particular community. This is my community. This is where I went to school. I didn't tell y'all that. I don't think I really disclosed that. This is the school that I went to. This is the school my parents went to. This is the school my brothers went to. This is my school. And so we had to make sure that those parents, who may not have had the types of supports that they, you know, intrinsic with them, we had to teach them how to help their kids at home. That was important for us. That's where the wraparound services come in. I am big on wraparound. I don't think it's all about how you teach them because as I told you before, if a kid hadn't eaten the night before, then he's not going to be able to focus on the work that he's expected to do the next morning. That's crucial. If a kid has holes in his shoes, he has no clean clothes, he's going to be too embarrassed, and all he's going to think about how he, the odor that he's giving off, or the fact that the kids are teasing him about those things. We have to build supports to support those kids in need and also how to help our parents be parents. And so these are some of the things that we provided as wraparound supports for this particular campus. So I am glad to tell you, at the end of that year, this was actually the celebration. There was a district-wide celebration. My dad happened to be there. Like, all the alumni showed up, right? Because they were proud, right? Because, you know, when you hear so many negative things about your school, guess what? It starts to become part of you. You know, you start to think, okay, are we really that bad? That's what was happening in this particular situation. So the rating went from an F to a C. Okay? So we went up to, some of the data that I can point out to you, it was a 5% increase in the approaches category. There was a 7% increase in the meats category, and a 13% in meats for sped students. Okay? Huge jump. Also, instructional focus shifted from test-taking to intervention and content mastery. And then cultural shift. This wasn't about, okay, let's suspend all the kids. No, we got to keep them here. Okay? So we had an all-in approach where teachers, students, parents, and alumni were a part of the solution. This is Cashmere High School. This is Cashmere High School. If you do, if you Google Cashmere High School with a K, you will see, is Cashmere going to make it out? The worst school in the state of Texas according to the rating. We went in and we changed that. We changed that. And it wasn't about me, though. I have to tell you, go back to the slide. The man behind the microphone, that's not me. That's Mr. Reggie Bush. That was the principal at the time. Dynamic. My dad came to me about a month inside me working with the campus, and he said, what's going to happen? I said, oh, we're going to get out. We're getting out of IR. No doubt about that. I believed that from day one because of strong leadership. Strong leadership, it trickles down. It creates an environment where teachers want to work, where students want to be a part of it, where students have a voice in this. All of that leads to success, and that's what Mr. Bush did. And my role was just to support him in that work, and that's what I did. I tried to put the slide up, and I couldn't get it. He had a slogan. He said, and I told you guys, this is the last time. I said, what do you need from me the most? He said, Ms. Robinson, if you're not into work, you're in the way. He said, I need you in the work with me. If you're not in the work, you're in the way. And I was like, okay, I like that. I need to be in the work, too. I don't need to be in the office, you know, and looking at my, you know. No, he needs me in the work doing just like he's doing, helping out, coaching. That's Cashmere High School. So at this time, I'll pause for any questions you have to ask for me.
Are there any questions on the presentation?
No. I'd just like to say that was wonderful. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Anybody else? That was fantastic, and it was, obviously, if you don't have any questions, it was very well done. So we're going kind of a round robin. We have interview questions that we've identified. The first person up with their question is Ms. Paula Johnson.
Thank you again for coming. It's your New York friend.
Yes, ma'am.
And it was such a pleasure meeting your dad here. You spoke so much about him last year, and it was great for us to get to meet him this year. And he did a great job raising you.
Thank you.
I want to say that. Almost like you said, like we said, almost like twins here. Could you please share with us your preferred and most frequently used communication strategies for both internal and external stakeholders, including students?
Thank you for the question, Ms. Johnson. I think I'm going to give you a couple of answers, if you don't mind. I always think face-to-face is probably the most important way to communicate. I encourage individuals to talk to people. I don't think we do that enough. When I, especially when I'm coaching my principals, I often tell them, emails, believe it or not, can be misinterpreted. They can be misinterpreted by the type of punctuation you use, some of the subject lines you have in it. So it's important that you talk to people, and that's what I believe is a strong suit of mine, and that's what I plan to do with this board. As I told you guys before, I'm planning to have a consistent and consistent dialogue with you. I'm committing to that. I'm committing to having monthly meetings. As I told Armani, as well as a young man from Nashville South, they will be included in those dialogues, those monthly dialogues. I cannot sit here in good faith as a superintendent and create a policy that's going to affect kids and not invite the kids into the conversation. That doesn't make a lot of sense to me. And the same with teachers. Giving them the opportunity to come to the table and have a discussion, I think is very important. I don't want you to, I don't want them to read anything in the paper because that can be misconstrued. I don't want them to have to read it on an email because that can be misinterpreted. I want them to hear directly from me. Now, of course, written communication does come behind that, but I think a good verbal conversation is always the way to start from me. I would definitely say I'm a transparent individual. Sometimes people say I'm overly transparent, and I'm okay with that. I don't think that's a negative. And I've said this a number of times to you guys. You're probably tired of hearing me say this. You know, you can either be mad at me because I tell you, and you just don't like it. I'd rather that to be the case than for you to be mad at me because I didn't tell you. It's okay. I'd rather, if you're going to be mad at me, I'd rather be mad at me because at least you can say, you know what? He did tell me, though. I may not agree with him, but he told me. That's the way to handle things to me. It's just to be upfront and to communicate. Now, I will tell you, though, as a leader, I often approach my principals, especially when I first met a lot of them. It's like, how do you, how do you want me to communicate with you? Well, what's the best way to communicate? That's a question I ask them. And then a follow-up question is, well, what do you mean, Mr. Robinson? What do you mean? Well, when we have, when I have to give you feedback, these are the two examples I use. You want me to use kid gloves, or you want me to use cactus hands? Okay? Y'all know cactus, right? And so they think about it and say, oh, okay. Now, give me the cactus hands. I want it right. I want it. Just give it to me. Okay? You got to be careful what you ask, right? Because then, you know, everybody wants, they think they want it, but they really don't want it. So I have to honestly, I'm coaching myself on how to find a, like, the middle ground on that. Because I'll say, well, you did say, oh, you know, that was a little, okay, let me back off a little bit. But Ms. Johnson, it's just being upfront and communicating directly is one way. As a district, I tell you that we have to be more effective about getting our message out. A school, that's any school district. We have to be our own messenger. We can't afford for others to message for us. We have to figure out what it's going to be, and we have to get it out there. Because if we are flaky about what we want to do, somebody else will decide for us. Then it's too late to respond. We're responding. As a school district, we can't be responsive. We have to be active in initiating that correspondence. But as far as the community is concerned, I will commit as well to a weekly newsletter and getting information out, monthly to you, talking with you. Was having some conversations today, trying to figure out, like, what are the systems, what that you guys are doing now? Because I'm not trying to come in here and say, oh, that's wrong. I just wanted to, where are you now? So maybe we can tweak some things. But communication is big, but we have to be our own messengers on that.
Are there any follow-up questions? Okay. Actually, Ms. Raymond?
What are your thoughts on social media and communication from the district?
I certainly think that the district has to be more active on social media. It definitely has to be active on social media. I think that's important. That's how individuals get their information these days. So we have to go to them. You know, I don't know what the numbers are, but newspapers aren't selling these days. They're just not. That industry is almost dead, right? Printing is almost dead. Like, everything is instant. And so we have to, we have to be active in making sure that our social media, if it's Facebook, Twitter, as I told you before, that's where I get my news at. I don't know, last time I watched the nightly news, like, I don't have time for that. But why would I when I already know what happened? Because I've seen it on Twitter already. You know, I watched the story. That's where things happen instantly. That's where things break now. They don't break, they don't break on, nobody goes to CNN.com. I hate to, I'm not trying to dog that particular channel or any other channel. Fox, no, they go to Twitter and get, it's instant. They go to Facebook. That's where things drop. So we have to make sure that we're getting our messages out through those particular
Next up is Ms. Giglio.
Hi. What strategies do you routinely use when making a decision that will have a significant impact on many of the members of your school district?
So that question was raised to me and Armani, and I actually talked about that today. You know, we talked about that. As I just stated a few minutes ago, guys, I cannot make a decision that I'm not fully familiar with. make a decision that I'm not fully familiar with, okay? The problems with, that we make as higher-ups in districts is we create policies that we have no idea how they affect the people the most that they are meant to affect. We don't, we don't, because we can't, we don't relate to that. As I told Armani, I don't understand any of the music that's coming out from that, what he listens to. I don't know, because my son, I don't know what that is. So we have to engage them in a conversation to figure out, okay, well, what is this about? How, you know, this is what we're thinking about. How does this affect you? That's why he's on this board. That's why he's the representative. And he has to be involved in those conversations. And these young men want to be involved in conversations.
Oh, yeah.
They want to be. I've been blown away by some of the questions I've received from them. And, but, it is truly about the engagement. Teachers the same way. Like, we have to not be afraid to allow them to talk to us. You know, I think today, for example, while I was at campuses, I asked principals two questions. "What do you do well here? What do you do well?" And just told me right away. And then, okay, I said, "Let's reflect. What do you have to focus on because you struggle with that the most?" And so I think they were kind of shocked by that question, but they were able to answer it. But I'm not sure they even asked that, those kind of questions before. Because what I'm trying to do is engage them in a conversation, because if this is not what they're doing, what they're not well at, or they need to focus on, that's what we need to be focusing our training on, right? We need to center our training around the areas that they need assistance with. You know, if I was superintendent, the third question I would have asked them, "Well, as a superintendent, how can I support you?" That would have been the third question. I try to stay in my lane today, because that's not my role, right? But that's important for me and for them to understand that I'm actually asking you, "How can I, as a superintendent, support you? How can I make you better?" Because that's important for me to, for you to be on top of your game. But it's about communication. It's about asking them those questions. It's about having that dialogue with them. Dialogue is a two-way street. It has to be. It cannot be top-down. It has to be top-down and then going right back up. And as a superintendent, I have to be comfortable with that. I am comfortable sitting down and listening and receiving that information and getting, and I'm encouraging pushback. "Okay, I see it on your face. Go ahead and push back. Push back. Come on, give it to me." Because that may be something I'm not thinking about. I need to know that. Trust me, if everybody in the room agrees with me, we got a problem. We got a problem. I don't want a bunch of yes-men around me. That's not, we're not gonna be successful like that. All we're gonna do is we're gonna be compliant, and we're gonna be robotic. We're not gonna be innovative. We're not gonna be creative, and we're not gonna move the needle. We need people, I need people around me who are gonna say, "Robinson, look, I like that idea, but have you thought about this?" That has to be the way that we function as a district. And we cannot, and as a superintendent, we can't be afraid for people to be around us to have that. I'm comfortable with people who come and say, "Hey, I don't really, I don't know about that. I think, you know, we need to look at it different ways." "Okay, I'm fine. So what's your solution?" "Just come with a solution, because otherwise you're complaining." And I don't like complaining. I like solutions. So I don't mind. Just, "Okay, well, what's your idea?" "Well, I don't know." No, 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 no. I don't want to hear that. I don't want to hear that. You opened the door, so come with the solution. And I'm all for that. I'm all for that.
Any follow-up?
Thank you.
I keep having follow-up, but I know we're asking what the questions are next, so I'm like, "Ooh, we'll get to that."
Ms. Seem?
Yes. I'm gonna take this down so you can understand me. My southern drawl plus the...
Yes, ma'am.
Makes it muffled. Can you share with us your experiences with negotiating with unions? And any thoughts on the subject that you might want to share?
So being from Texas, unions are a little different. We are an at-will state. So of course, they don't have as much authority as we would say up here. The opportunities that I have with the unions specifically, though, is around violations when it comes to employees, because they still represent their employees in certain grievances. And so I do have vast experiences in having conversations with them. I've never had a situation where I cannot get along with the union rep. Now, have there been situations where we agree to disagree? Absolutely. And we've both been fine with that. But when it comes to negotiations, they've only been in a sense of reviewing policies that are coming up and, you know, getting their input in the types of policies that we have pending. Those school closures, for example, we had, I remember being asked to go to mediation concerning a pending school closure for one of our alternative schools. And, you know, sat at the table and explained the demographics of the school, what the school was there for, what, you know, the rating, because the rating was an F unfortunately at the time. And so, you know, getting their feedback because they were concerned about their employees possibly having to, you know, be reassigned. But they were doing what they were supposed to do, okay? And at the end of the day, the district decided to not close the campus. So I think that that particular example was an example where, you know, we're just being very, very honest with the union and just trying to figure out, you know, what's in the best interest of the district and for the students at the same time. I have been following the situation up here. I do realize it has been a bit of a struggle on both sides. I do know that with any successful negotiation, there's a bargain on both sides. And I'm hoping that we can come to a decision where both sides can go home and feel like, you know, that they've done what's in the best interest of students. That's what's most important. And I hope that, and I'm very confident of that. I am the son of a retired teacher. My mom, my late mother was a school teacher. So, you know, I'm the cheerleader for teachers. I'm not gonna lie to you. I am. But I know in this particular role, I also have to protect, you know, the interests of the district. But I think in my role, it is communicating and trying to make sure that we can find a win-win in what's best, in the best interest of all students.
Any follow-up?
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Darling?
Hello. First of all, I just want to say, I love the fact that your dad is here, and I hope to God that someday my kids invite me to a similar situation. You've set the bar pretty high for them.
I appreciate it.
So my question is, I would love it if you could tell us about a time that you failed, and what did you do to rectify the situation? And the question is from students.
That is a great question. So I'm actually gonna tell a story publicly I don't think I've ever told, okay? And it's not one that I'm proud of, but it's one that I will tell you that I've learned so much from, okay? Today, I was asked a very, a similar question this morning in my first interview. I was joking about that, that you were a part of. That's a joke, guys. She didn't interview me. That's a joke. Where, you know, they said, "If you weren't gonna be a superintendent or you weren't in education, what would you be?" And I said, "An attorney." I said, "Politics and law," you're right. Well, I actually did a year in law school, okay? I spent a year in law school. I was unsuccessful. It was an unsuccessful year in law school. Let me tell you why. You have to have the mentality to put yourself through law school. You gotta be there mentally. I graduated from college at the age of 20, 20, 21, okay? I was kind of young, okay? I didn't know what studying was like because college was so easy for me. It was easy. I had to study, just being, don't listen to this, Armani. I didn't have to study. It was easy. Came easy. But when I came to law school, it blew my mind. It blew it, okay? And so that one year, I said to myself at the end of the year, "This would never happen to me again. I would never put myself into a situation that I'm not prepared for." Was not prepared. I realized that there were things that I had to do that were intrinsic, that were within me, such as discipline, such as learning how to study. These are things that, you know, some people have it easy, test-taking, looking at cases. There was a lot of things I had to do, and I had to decide. And, you know, and I'm gonna say this jokingly, but this is what I ask people, like, "What do you want to be when you grow up?" I asked you that question. "What do you want to be when you grow up?" Because at that particular point in my life, I was so immature with where I wanted to be. I was no, I didn't, I was not, I didn't have a direction. And so it was just like, just flowing with no direction. That is a huge failure. I don't think I've ever even told my son that. Like, I'm embarrassed about that. But you know what? I've worked every single day of my life to erase that nine months out of my memory. Because it's embarrassing to me. I've worked hard to forget about that. Now, I know, you know, there'd be people, "Oh, you weren't unsuccessful in law school." And that's fine. I wear that. I wear that. Because it reminds me and motivated me to be where I am today. Sometimes you need a failure to pick yourself up. And so that's what I've always looked at it as. It's, you know, I never have called it a failure. I just called it a setback. I called it a setback. And I realized at that particular time that maybe this was not my calling. You know, my dad always told me, when I was in school, he said, "Well, what are you gonna do with that degree?" He would bug me and bug me. "What are you gonna do with that degree? What are you gonna do?" "Sounds like you're gonna be a teacher." "No, I'm not gonna be a teacher." That's just what I told him, right? And so then my mom would say, "No, you better not be a teacher. I don't want you to be a teacher." And I said, "Mom, why shouldn't I be a teacher?" She said, "There are two reasons. One, not paid enough and not appreciated." That's what she would tell me. This is a teacher that was in the business at that time, probably 28 years. She said, "We're underpaid and we're unappreciated." And so for some reason, that motivated me to be a teacher, okay? But, you know, even though it was a failure of sorts, it was a failure that, knowing what I have today, I'll take it every time. No regrets. No regrets whatsoever. Sometimes you need that to humble yourself. But as an individual, you have to be able to accept that. You have to be able to accept, you have to be able to admit it. If anybody asks me, I'll tell you, I just don't publicly say, "This is like, this is gonna be on YouTube now probably." It's all good. It's all good, though. It's all good. If I wasn't comfortable with myself, I would not have said that. But I am very comfortable with that. It definitely was a setback in my life. But I would not have it any other way. I would not.
I do have one follow-up question. What do you want to be when you grow up?
That's a great, that's another great question. You know what? Nobody's ever asked me that question. You can't turn it back on me.
I just did.
You just did. I want to be the superintendent of Nashville School District. How about that?
Good answer.
Good answer?
Yes, very good.
All right.
Ms. Brown?
Thank you. So I actually have another question that was submitted by the students. Where do you stand on the issue of class rank in GPA?
Okay. I think class rank is very important. I think, especially when you're talking about getting into some of the more esteemed, established universities, that those types of things are definitely looked at, scholarship considerations. I think that we have to make sure that we have a set standard when it comes to, you know, what it is. It can't be about favoritism. It can't be because somebody's mama is this, and I unfortunately have seen situations like that. And whether it's about, you know, GPA, if we, everybody's on the same scale, it can't be, "Oh, you use a 5.0 scale. Oh, you use a 6.0 scale. So that means this." We have to kind of get all those wrinkles out and make sure that everybody's looking at the same thing. That's important. Because if not, you're gonna leave yourself up for the type of controversy that I don't think is, it's not helping anybody. It's actually hurting the kids. But as far as, you know, those types of things being in place, I think they're very important. During our visit to South today, I know it's important over there because I heard two kids coming to board, member Raymond, talking about the ranking, right?
Hot topic right now.
It's like hot topic, right? So I do know that that's an issue. But as far as, you know, in Texas, that's an important component for seniors. I mean, they all look forward to their ranking. So I don't think there's anything, I would say that it's a negative. As long as we have a process for determining that, that's clear. I'm okay with that.
Thank you.
Any follow-up? Ms. Raymond?
So I'm curious if you're familiar with competency-based grading?
I'm not. I'm not, I'm not familiar with it.
So that's what we have here in the high schools, in the elementary schools and in the high schools. And it's about content mastery, basically. And I'm curious if you have any thoughts on that as opposed to a traditional, you know, grading scale where you're, you know...
So I'm assuming there's some type of test or something that they have to score? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, you have to have a 70 to go on. But in order to get credit for a class and move on to the next class, you have to demonstrate a baseline of content mastery of each of the modules within the class.
Okay.
So you can't go on to geometry if you didn't learn your algebraic equations.
Sure. So in Texas, we have something slightly different. It's not, you know, referred in that particular way. We actually have an ELC system, which is an end-of-course system, which is actually state-mandated that students have to pass five ELCs in order to graduate, okay? These five ELCs are English 1, English 2, Biology, History, and Algebra, okay? Those are the five ELCs. A kid cannot take geometry if he has not passed Algebra, okay? So we have something very similar to that. I would really have to kind of get into the specifics to kind of make sure that I'm following the track of what you're saying. It's kind of hard for me to have an opinion about it. But I do kind of understand what you're saying as far as, like, if they haven't mastered a particular subject, it is kind of hard to go on. But I would also argue this point too, especially when we deal with math. Algebra 1 really doesn't build on geometry, okay? That, it really doesn't, okay? And math teachers that understand, they know, yeah, he's probably right, because geometry is geometry. Algebra 1 builds on Algebra 2, right? So it's a little, it's kind of, you know, we get into the weeds a bit, but that's kind of the system that I'm used to dealing with as far as end-of-course exams.
Thank you. Ms. Brown?
I actually just have a follow-up too, because it just sparked my interest. Do you, most of your schools in Texas run on a block schedule at the high school level or on a traditional six or seven class?
That's another great question. The district that I work in actually has, we allow principals to have a little liberty on setting their schedules, okay? Now, does it create sort of an organized chaos at times? It does, okay? In working with high schools and middle schools, I tried to give them, you know, the pros and cons of that. As a middle school principal, I've done both. I love a block schedule, but I love a modified block schedule, okay? So I'm not a traditional block person. I like a modified version. And I'll kind of explain what I mean by a modified version. I don't like the 90-minute classes, okay? Teachers are tired. Students are tired. I don't know which one is in worse condition by the end of the day, the teacher or the student, okay? And so I've always been a fan of like a 75-minute block, where, you know, somewhere in the middle, you can actually use some of that time to create sort of like what they have at South, you know, just a sort of an enrichment period where kids can catch up on work. Those things are, he's using his block schedule creatively, which is probably what you need. And so what we would have is, we would have the opportunity, some courses would be every day, so math and reading would be every day. But, and depending on the grade level, in Texas, for example, science is tested at eighth grade, okay? Science and social studies are tested at eighth grade. Those would be every day. But for sixth and seventh grade, maybe they were every other day on a block. It just depends on the makeup of the schedule. It also depends on the type of school that you have and the leadership. You know, if you don't have a strong leadership and you don't have some strong results, then I don't know if you're gonna have that leash where you can go out and just do what you gotta do. You know, we have to kind of look... You know, we have to kind of look at everybody different. Every situation may, may need a little bit more managing from up top. It just kind of depends on, on, on the situation and, and what's best for the kids in that particular environment. Also, you know, I've, I've seen some that have the 7 or 8 periods and, you know, it's a lot, it's a lot for one day. It's a lot. Is there enough time? I, I always thought that's not enough time for, for, so I, that's why I always say 75 minutes is always like that, that, that good compromise for me. So I'm in favor of, of sort of a modified block is what I, I've always gone by as, as an educator.
Thank you.
I have a follow-up.
Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. When these schools were built, this is when block scheduling came aboard. I was on the board back then, and there's a town in Massachusetts called Chelmsford. We all, a lot of school board members went around and saw the different block scheduling. I went to Chelmsford, and when I came back, they did the skinnies, they called it. Like, it would be like you're modified, that they would have like math and maybe reading, you know, every day or every, whatever it was, so long ago, that was back in 2000, 2001. And I said to them, if you go back and read the minutes of the meeting, I said 60 minutes, I thought, probably, and you're saying 75, so I wasn't that far off. Because I felt that 90 minutes, because we had a principal back then that said 90 minutes. I felt that 90 minutes was a little long, but it gave them, I felt, 60 minutes. Because, you know, 45 minutes in a class, we all know, there's no time to get any, any problems.
That's right.
So I guess my question is, if you were to become superintendent, would you go back and take a look at the block scheduling at this point in time to make sure that it's working? And if it needs to have any adjustments, would you do something like that?
So I, I, I think the first conversation is to bring the principals in to have them to, to explain to me what they have with their schedules. And, and from, from, from what I observed today, both need to be in a room at the same time. Because they, they depend on each other. With busing, kids from, from campus to campus, that has to be a conversation that we have together as a collective. I, 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 I think that listening to them and talking about the pros and cons of it, I think we could, we could definitely come up with some type of compromise. Again, I just want what's best for the kids. I don't want to go in and just change things for the sake of changing. But I am not a fan of 90-minute blocks. I'm, I'm not, I'm, I will go on the record and say that. That's a long time. That is a long time. And our teachers are already tired. They're already, you know, going through a lot right now. If, if we can try to fi- and students at the same time, try to figure out ways to support them, I think that, that may be one of those creative ways. I, I love what, what, again, I love what South was doing. When, when I asked him, "Well, how long are your blocks?" And he told me that he took time off of blocks, off, off of schedules to create that extra time. That's the kind of thinking that I'm, I'm, I'm thinking, that, that aligns with what, with what I'm seeing. I mean, i- i- it was, it was good. I'm like, "Okay, you know what? I've been doing all these years now." They're doing, he's doing the same thing up here in New Hampshire. It's just trying to figure out what's best for your situation, okay? But, uh, wh- 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 what's, I think is unique about your schools, which is a great thing, though, is that they work together. When I saw that bus outside waiting to pick up kids to take to the other school, that cuts down on a lot of situations with teacher shortage. Sharing of resources is crucial for a district like this. And, and so I, I think that's, uh, in, uh, very creative. And I, and I told him today, I said, "Well," or I asked him that, I said, "Well, how does creating your master schedule look?" He said, "Hey, we had to sit down together and do this." I said, "Oh, okay, I just want to make sure." I was, I was thinking that. I was thinking that because you can't make a decision at South and not talk to North. Like, it's just don't, it's just not gonna work like that. And so, uh, he, he definitely, he got that today. He understood that. And so, um, but to, to go back to your original question, I would not be opposed to it. But I, I think this, it's not something that I would come up here and just say, "This is what we're gonna do." We're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna look at the data? Is what, you know, what, what you're doing right now, is it working? These are conversations that we would have to have and, and assess them and then have a discussion.
So I think I have a follow-up question to that. And it's not, it's not necessarily about the, the, the details of the schedule, but it's about being a new leader in a district that's well-established. And if you're bringing in something new that, you know, is better and more innovative and, and could make the district better, but you have people who are kind of digging in their heels because they're used to something, how do you get people on board with that shift?
So, and, and I think that, that this is a, a situation where this will be a lot of practice on that, right? So I, I have experience in being a change agent. I do. I have a lot of experience in it. A- as a, as a school support officer, I think I have been effective in trying to assess a situation. I, I, whenever I take over a new school or, or start supervising a new school, I have this list of questions that I run through. What I am trying to do is I want the person, the principal that's in front of me, to give me an orientation of their school. I don't go in with any assumptions. I don't go in assuming I have all the answers. I want, I know what the data says, tells me, but I want you to tell me the story behind it, okay? Now, if the data doesn't look good and then the story also does not look good, then we got a problem, right? Because what you're doing does not work. But that's a discussion. That's where, when I said bringing people to the table, that's part of that conversation. It's engaging them in, in, in reality and what's black and white. We can talk about what we love, but if what we love doesn't work, we gotta divorce it. Okay? We have to get a separation. I'm sorry, say that again?
Divorces are painful.
Yes, they are. They are. They are. Change is painful. Change is hard.
Yes, it is.
We don't like change. Nobody likes change. Right? Especially when you've been doing it a long time. Just because you've been doing it a long time don't mean it's right, though. That just means you've been doing it wrong a long time. Right? So, um, but I, I, I honestly think that it's, it's about trying to figure out what, what we're doing and why it doesn't work. And then come, and then working to come up with that solution for what we can do to improve that. It's not just coming in and saying, "Okay, I looked at the data. This is what it says. This is what we're gonna do." That's, that's not how I do things. I don't, I don't work that way. I don't work that way, okay?
Excellent. Thank you. Oh, Ms. Dean?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Actually, thank you. One of, one of the things you said when you were talking, I recognize something that you, I've known it all. You're absolutely right about North and South. They work well together. And that's, a good team is always a wonderful thing. So, so I guess I'm sitting here saying, "He's right. They absolutely do work wonderfully well together." And when I'm thinking about that, I believe earlier today, you said that currently you supervise the elementary and the middles.
No, in the past.
Okay, so...
We, we had a reorg in our district. And so last year, when we had the conversation in May, I had campuses on all levels, from early childhood all the way up to high school, high school of 3,000 kids.
Okay.
Okay? This year, under the reorg, I have all elementary now. So we've gone from geographic areas to now leveled areas as far as our schools are concerned.
So when you had all three of those schools, I, I guess, I guess when you were saying that, the thought that came to my mind is, wouldn't it be wonderful if all of the different elements worked together throughout the nation, even in harmony like that? Because that's such a wonderful thing to see. Obviously, the kids benefit. So I guess I would ask you, looking back to last year then, when you were overseeing the middle and the elementaries and the high schools, did you have some kind of, of schedule or process by which you communicated individually with the different elements so that, so that they, so that you could hopefully help them to, if they weren't the team that, that would help them?
I think that's a, that's a great question. I, I, I'll tell you, not a schedule. Because it was hard. It's hard to, 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 to arrive at a campus, you know, that's elementary campus of, this, this elementary school probably had 1,500 kids, okay? It was a lo- it's actually the largest in the state of Texas. So it's a, and, and, and it was also a charter contract with the district. So I supported it as well. Our district has charter, had charter, had charter schools that we contract with. So I supported that campus, 1,500 students. So not only is it really not 100% our school, it's a charter, but we have to make sure that they're still doing the things that, that we require of them. And then getting my car and go to a high school that has 3,000 kids was a challenge. Because the data points that you're looking at are totally different. As I explained to you a little earlier, high schools have, have five ELCs, okay? Those are the state tests for, on top of AP exams, graduation, attendance, dropouts, all different types of data that we have to look at, that elementary schools don't even have to bother with. Only the student achievement for elementary schools is really the big, big issue. I- i- it was a stretch. It's hard. It was hard. I didn't really realize how hard it was, though, to be honest with you, until I didn't have to do it anymore. Just, just being honest with you. Just being honest with you. Because now that I'm working in all elementary campuses, we're looking at the same set of data, I find that I'm more effective. I, 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 I reflect, and, and I'm, I'm one of those people, I'll tell you if I don't think I, I did as good of a job as I should have did. I think, I think that, that, you know, I'm way more effective than I was last year. And my principals will tell you, "Oh, Terrence is, he's on, he's always on point with this stuff." You know, that, that's what they, because I'm looking at data points. I'm saying, "Okay, look, this is what your data's showing me. What are we doing?" Okay, when I looked at this report, "Oh, I haven't had a chance to look at that report." "What do you mean? I've looked at 16 schools, and you haven't looked at your one?" Right? Because I'm not all over the place.
We only have 12 elementaries.
No, 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 no. But not that, I, I, but, but I think what I'm saying, as a leader, I'm, I'm just reflecting with you on, on how much more effective I am as a leader. Someone asked me that question. Like, what's the difference between this year and last year? I am much more effective. It's kind of scary. Like, you don't want to get me, like, I'm, I'm laser-like right now. And, and my, but, but, but at the same time, effective in the sense that my principals feel supported. And that's important for me, that I'm communicating with them consistently, that I'm at their campus consistently and, and, and trying to make sure that they're looking at the right points of, when it comes to all types of data that we have available for us and at our disposal.
So you look, may I just, so you look for uniformity in, for instance, in the middle schools and in the elementary schools, looking at them individually, obviously, because they're different?
Sure.
You look for uniformity in all of those, though?
So that, that's another great question. That, that's one of the, the conversations that Mr. Harrington, right, at, at, at Fairgrounds, yeah? We talked about that. I asked him, I said, "So when you're in class, when you're in your classrooms, are you looking for a specific board configuration on the, you know, for, for..." And he looked at me, and I, and, and I think that's more of a Houston term, board configuration. And he looked at me, he said, "Oh, you mean the objective?" I said, "Yeah, there you go." So we're speaking the same language. And, and he said, "No." He said, "What I look for now is what are they teaching it? And are they teaching it the way that they're supposed to teach it? And are the activities aligned with what they're teaching?" And he said, you know, "When we were doing that turnaround work, we were having to do that, all that kind of stuff, laying it out there, what are you teaching, student-friendly objective." He explained all that to me. But he, he was clear in now where they are as a, as a school and the progress they made, they don't have to do all of that tedious stuff anymore. And so that's an individual conversation that, that, that principals have to have. That we, and we, as a leader, we have to allow for our leaders to be leaders. I can't say, "I want every school to have this up on their boards. I want this, 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 this." Yeah, y'all, y'all will send me back to Houston real quick, okay? So that's not, that, that's not gonna be effective. What's, what's gonna be effective is having a conversation of, "How do you know what your teachers are teaching? How do you know if they're teaching it correctly? How are we assessing what they're teaching?" If you can explain that to me, we're good. Mr. Harrington explained that to me today. We were clear. That, 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 that's what's most important. And then when we talk about the, the interventions for our tier-three learners, the learners that either are, are either in exceptional education or those are students who are struggling academically, how are we supporting those students? As principals, we need to be able to, 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 to say how we're doing that. That's important. Our principals have to be instructional leaders. Have to be. Must be. If you're not an instructional leader, you're not gonna last long as a principal under me. I'm just being honest with you. I'm just being honest, because I look for people who are instructional leaders. Unfortunately, I can't hire the PE coaches anymore. The ones who roll the ball out, say, "Go play." I can't hire those people because I need people who understand what good teaching looks like. Now, you don't have to be a calculus major, but I want you, I want to go in that calculus room with you as the principal, and I want you to tell me what's going on. Now, Terrence Robinson is not gonna be able to tell you about anything that's going on on that board. Nothing, okay? All I can tell you is that we're in a calculus classroom, okay? The principal may not be able to tell me that, but both of us can tell if good teaching and learning are occurring in this classroom. We know that because we know what to look for. We know if students are having conversations, if they're dialoguing, if teachers are asking questions they need to ask. Are kids learning? What's, what's the evidence that we have that they're learning? Are we tracking how they're learning? Those are, those are, that's, that's what, those were, those are things that successful schools do. And so it's not gonna be a micromanaging thing. It's gonna be a managing thing. How are we managing this as a district? That's important.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next up is Ms. Raymond.
Thank you. And while you were having all those conversations with Mr. Harrington, I got explained how the pigeon rides the bu- or don't let the pigeon ride the bus book by a second grader. So we both had a good day today. So this question was written by the students as well. It says, "What are your plans to foster connection between the superintendent and both students and families?"
So I think the first thing I, I would tell you is, I, I'm definitely not gonna hit the ground running. I'm gonna hit the ground learning. And trying to learn as much as I can about this community, what makes it tick. I, I want to know the, the nuts and bolts behind this machine. And that's, that's gonna be going, going out and having some conversations and listening to what the community, that their input in this particular district. That, that, that's the first step. I, I also think that there has to be a continuous dialogue, though. Like, it just can't stop with the first, you know, phase one of my introduction, the first 90 days. It can't just stop there. Can't stop at the first 30 days. Like, this has to be continuous. And, and, and having, having, and empowering them. Empowering both sections, parents and students. And, and giving them voice is important. In any successful district, those, those individuals have to have voice. And I don't mind allowing them to have that voice. And I'm gonna include teachers in there. They have to have voice. We have to empower them. We're not gonna improve as a district or make any gains as a district if, if we don't have everybody involved in, in the turnaround or the improvement of the district. And so I just think we have to develop a continuous dialogue and, and set up the type of systems that create working relationships where these people feel valued. They feel like, you know, he listens. Not only does he listen, but he takes what we say in account. He, we may not always agree, but we can't say he doesn't listen to us. Because at the end of the day, you know, we're the ones that are held accountable, right? So we're gonna do what's best, you know? Some of those ideas could be way out there in left field, but they're never gonna say that we're not listening to them. That, that's important for me.
Can I ask a follow-up? Okay, so, um, out of curiosity, when you are making these connections with families and community members, are you envisioning, you know, just having events where people come here? Are you envisioning going to sporting events and, and concerts that the schools are sponsoring? Or are you also looking at other community events? We have a lot of parades and festivals and stuff.
So all of the above. Is that, that a, that a response that I can give? I don't think there's a limit to the types of involvement that I want to have in the community. You know, with, with, with the listen and learn sessions, um, you know, I, I don't see it being unreasonable where we, we can't have multiple events throughout the district, for example. And try to figure out how we can make sure that we're going to the people. It, it's not gonna make sense for us to have a district this size and let's say, "Oh, we're gonna have two. We're gonna have, well, let's say, we're gonna have three. We're gonna have one for elementary, one for middle, and one for high." That doesn't make any sense. That's not, that's not giving everybody the opportunity to be there. So we would have way more than that, to where we have so many that people will say, "Okay, well, I was at the one last week. There's no point in going tonight." You know, that, that's, that's the kind of, that's the kind of things we want. We want to offer them multiple opportunities. I, I love being in, in the community, I love sports. I, I, I'm a huge basketball, baseball, football. I just really stop at those three. I've never been to a hockey, hockey, uh, hockey game, match, I don't even know the time of the turn, never have been. I, 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 but I will tell you that I am, uh, I'm looking forward to those kind of things. I want to experience things that I've never experienced before. You know, I've never met a stranger. I've told you guys this. I, I, I'm my daddy's son, we, we both have never met a stranger. So engaging people in the conversation is not something that, that's, that's a problem for me. You know, when, when I go to games, I'm not going to be, you know, trying to sit in the owner's box, you know what I'm saying? I'm not going, I'm not sitting in the press box. You know, I, I'm not going to be on the sidelines. I want to be there next to the band, I want to be where the parents are and not be above that, you know, that, that, that opportunity for them to, hey, you know, what do you think about, I, I, that, that's okay with me. I'm okay with that. And, and that's just, that's just generally who I am. And my wife tells, will say it all the time, my God, you can talk to anybody. I mean, I don't know. I, I, again, I'm just my daddy's son, I don't know what else to say on that. We, that, that's what we do. We, 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 we talk to people, we talk a lot. So, uh, no, to answer your question, all of the above, though, seriously. You know, i- i- I don't think any type of, of form of, of opportunity for engagement will be off limits, off limits for me personally.
Can I just ask a question?
Yes, Ms. Johnson.
I know it's gonna, I don't know if it's going to fit into this or whatever, but we really didn't mention anything about special ed here. And I just wanted to kind of put this in, you know, because we're talking about fostering connection between superintendent and both students and families, but I just wanted to kind of get an idea, like with families and special needs kids, what your interaction, you know, meaningful interaction that you've had with a student with intensive needs? Because I think we didn't really touch on any of this, and this deals with family and students, so I think I just kind of like to get an answer on special, intensive special needs kids. Thank you.
So, you know, it's, it's kind of, it's going to be kind of hard for me to give you one example, but I, I've just always been the, the, the kind of, especially as a principal, that has tried to engage all students. So I'll give you an example. One, one middle school, we were celebrating, that I was principal of, we were celebrating our ten-year anniversary of that particular building at Bailey Middle School. And so we had what, what, what we call sort of a, a walk, a, a walk where we, we walked the superintendent from a particular place all the way to the gym. So it's like a, you know, like a walk where all the kids were out and everybody's like, you know, they have a line and like a parade kind of thing. Well, you know who led that parade were my students who were in life skills? So I've always been trying to, trying to have opportunities to engage all kids. Being, being inclusive is important for me. It's important that those parents see their kids having the same opportunities because unfortunately, you know, they, they just, they just don't. They don't, you know, because of the circumstance, they don't have the same opportunities. And so we, we have to be intentional about providing those for those kids. As I told you guys on the last time I talked to you, you guys are viral when it comes to your exceptional education program with the basketball.
Yeah.
Like, I've seen two videos of these students, like, doing some real through-the-legs and, and making shots. And I'm watching this in Houston, Texas, and this is on Twitter. Like, I'm not Googling Nashua, no, this is what's popping up on my feed. And so, um, you know, that, that, there's already, already opportunities that are there for these kids to be included. And, you know, being inclusive is so crucial to developing these kids and their, their life skills. These, these kids have to go out and get jobs. They, we have to build where, okay, well, can we give you a set of skills where you can still go out and, and work? We, we have to do that as a district. And what better way than to build their self-esteem by, by giving them the opportunity to, to play basketball? We don't have that kind of stuff in Texas. I'm just like, wow. We don't have that. Our kids don't have the opportunity to do that. And, and again, the example I gave you, leading the parade with the superintendent. You know, I, I remember at the same school, I had a young lady who, who was, um, who was visually impaired, she, she was completely blind. But I made a point for her to know who her principal was. And this is a school of twelve hundred kids. Maya, do you, do you know what this is? Oh, this is Mr. Robinson. She would just be blushing. But you know, and that, that, that made her day. That made her day, and I was like, Maya, and I remember when I, when I left to, to, to become a school support officer, I said, Maya, will you take a selfie with me? Oh, Mr. Robinson, let's take a selfie. You know, that, that young lady unfortunately would never be able to see that selfie. Unfortunately, she would never be able to see that selfie. But in her mind, that made her day, that her principal, one, knew her and wanted to take a picture with her. That's important. And so, um, you know, that, that, that's, uh, that, that is definitely crucial for me, the, the being inclusive. It's important.
Thank you. Yes, we have a spectrum of our demographic here, and I think sometimes we, we overlook our special ed students because they are so well cared for by their teachers and their parents that we don't, we don't see their needs as often as we do the kids whose parents come here more often and, and, and talk about what they're missing out on. So I, I think we do a fantastic job with our students, and I'm glad to know that we have administrators that are willing to step in and recognize their exceptional abilities, even though we don't get to see them or talk about them as much as we want to. So thank you for that question, Ms. Johnson, I appreciate it. Next up is Ms. Lampier. I was like, Ms. Raymond just went, Ms. Lampier.
So my question is, what are your long-term career objectives?
My long-term career objectives?
Yes.
My long-term career, so when you say long-term, what, give me a timeframe. Because I'll, I'll give you an answer, but I don't think it's going to answer your question.
Well, you know, we've had, we've had some turnover here in Nashua.
Okay.
We want to make sure that we're going to have, pick someone that will stay for a while.
Okay.
So, um, I don't know, how about ten years from now?
Ten years from now, okay. Ten years from now, I, I, I hope that I will be the principal, I'm the principal, the superintendent of Nashua. I mean, that, that's, that, that's, that's, you know, who, who, who doesn't like, you know, to be in one place? Like, I, I hate to move. Like, I've been in Houston for forty, uh, my forty years of my forty-five years? You know, um, so, you know, moving around is just not my thing. So if, if we make the move, it's going, we're going, we're going to be kind of entrenched there, we're going to be, we're going to be established. That's, that's not, my wife works from home, so job situation is not a factor. The only thing that, you know, I'm be thinking about is, okay, well, United or Southwest for him, right? It's just trying to, you know, get him up here and, and, and spend some time. My daughter, on the way out of the door, my wife asked her, did she have a message from me? Because my, my daughter was actually out of school this week, they have a really interesting schedule in their district. And so she said, yeah. She said, you better get the job. I said, okay, yes, ma'am. I said, wow, you are, my daughter's a bully, she bullies her daddy, I don't know, I don't, I, I, but, but you know, she's so sweet, she doesn't want to be, she don't want to be classified as a bully, that's a bad word, right? Say, you are a bully. I'm not a bully, no, don't say that, uh, that's bully, that's bully words, you tell me I better get the job? Like, good, golly. But, you know, um, you know, it's to be the, it's to be the superintendent of Nashua. I mean, that, that, that's, that's, uh, that, that's my long-term goal. And, and, and while, in that ten years, you know, I, I really want you guys to reflect and say, you know, this is where we were, but this is where we are now. That, that's important that, that we are goal-oriented, and so that's one of the things that we'll establish together are, you know, what are the goals that we want to set? And what are the goals that we want to hold him accountable for? Because at the end of the year, we have to, we should be able to measure whether we're meeting those goals or not. And I, I, and I would, you know, give you monthly updates on where we are on those specific goals, like, what are the things that we put in place to, to, to meet those goals? That's important for me as a superintendent to, to be that particular way and, and to function with you, um, uh, in, in that way. But again, at the same time, guys, I told you, I told you guys this who are on, on the board in May, and I'll, I'll say this to you, to, to our, our new members, I'm coming up here to be a part of a team. If, if I come up here, it's to be a part of a team. It, it's not a, you know, I'm not, not a one-man show. I, I, you know, that, that, you've heard the term, there's no I in team, there is no I in team, there's not. I am, um, I, I'm, I, I wish I had the skills of Larry Bird, but even Larry Bird couldn't do it by itself. Right? He had to have Kevin McHale, Robert Parish, Danny Ainge, the late Dennis Johnson. I, I loved that boss at Celtics, I'm not going to lie to you, as much as I hated him, I loved him, because they were a team, right? And, and the same thing that has to be in this particular situation, you have to have a team. Even though Casey Jones was a great coach, Casey Jones would not have won a championship without that team. He just wouldn't have. And, and that's, that's the kind of mindset that I'm going into. And so, but at the same time, guys, I, I'm, I'm hoping that you're, you're, you know, you're ready to be pushed to. I'm hoping that. I'm hoping that, you know, we can actually have some, some conversations and where we can talk about how we plan to change, things that need to be changed. And if there does need to be change, then let's tweak it. I'm not the guy that just changes to be changed. That's not me. If it's not broke, you don't fix it. All right? But if, if it is broke, we have to come to the table and say, you know what, this is not working, and this is what we need to do.
Madam President?
Yes, Mr. Claffey, I heard, I heard the, what we call the doorbell.
The dog barking?
Yes, the doorbell.
If you hear dogs, if you hear dogs barking or trains whistling, it's because I got a real good bargain down here in Florida. Unfortunately, it comes at a price. Dr. Robinson, sorry, I can't be to meet you and your father. But hearing you talk about teamwork got me thinking, I've been meaning to ask you this for over an hour, watching you on TV is a little bit different than in person, but that lapel pin is really, really prominent, and I think I know what it is, and if I'm right, I had a, a question about that pin.
Okay. He said the, the, what, he said, one more time?
Are you asking about his pin on his, on his lapel?
Yes, the lapel pin, it's been, I've been dying to ask him all night.
What was the last part he said?
He said, oh, he said, he said he's been dying to ask about your lapel pin.
Oh, okay, okay. So, so the young man from, from south, he asked me a specific question, he said to me today, he said, I've been doing some research on you. I said, okay, and he said, what did you find, right? He said, I, I hear you are part of a fraternity. That's what I read.
Thank you.
And I said, yes, I am a part of a fraternity. I am a member of Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity Incorporated. It was founded on December fourth, nineteen oh six, at Cornell University in Ithaca, New York. I am a past board member, national board member of the organization. In fact, I just finished my term last July. This is my past board member pin, okay? We, uh, at this particular level, you hold an office for four years, and so I completed my four-year term. In my position, I supervise all functions with the fraternity over the states of Texas, Louisiana, Arkansas, and Oklahoma. And I am glad to be out of office. That, 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 this is, this is exactly what this particular pin is for.
I, I asked, when I did, because you were talking about teamwork, and I was just going to ask, what did that brotherhood teach you about leadership, values, and how, how, how did that brotherhood influence you as an educator? Thank you.
Wow, that's a great question. Oh, man, you, 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 you really are pulling at my, at my, my love, my, my strings right now, I love that question. You know, I, I, I am a person who, uh, who, who grew up with a great life. I really am. I didn't grow up hard, you know, I, I have it hard. I had parents that provided every single thing for me that I could ever want in life. My mom would always tell me, Terrence, if you ever get caught stealing, don't call me because I'm not picking you up, okay? And I said, why? She says, because you have no reason to ever steal. Okay? Dad let me know right then and there, you, you should never want for anything, just ask, right? Now, some people join fraternities or, or, or part of organizations because they need a sense of family. That's not why I joined, okay? I joined because I wanted to be a part of the best. Okay? And doing my research, looking at some of the, the prominent members of my organization, such as Martin Luther King Junior, W. B. Du Bois, Frederick Douglass, you look today, any African-American mayor of a city, of a city is probably an alpha man. You know, Ed Brooke, late senator from Massachusetts, as, as a fraternity member of mine, he's deceased now, but it, it's, it's, it's a lot of important individuals. Because of my work in the fraternity, I think I met like five or six candidates for president in the last cycle. I mean, that's just, you know, with, with my title, I was able to get in some rooms that, I mean, I just, just wouldn't have. The, the, the M L. K. Memorial that's on the title basin in, in Washington, D. C., my fraternity raised, helped raise one hundred and twenty million dollars for that memorial. The, the, the chair of the M L. K. Memorial Foundation is a past general president of my organization, he spearheaded that, our fraternity helped raise that money. So this is something that we take serious. We have, our, our aims are manly deeds, scholarship, and love for all mankind. I am committed every single day of my life to perform a manly deed. I am about uplifting people. Our money, I gave him something, I said, look, we can't finish this conversation, but what did I give you? I gave him my card. Said, hey, my cell phone number's on my card, you call me. I don't, I said, I don't even care if I don't get this job, you still call me. Because I, I'm just committed to helping people. Hey, you want to come down south? I know, I know college presidents, I can get you a full ride. Is that what you want to do? If you want to come to down south where it's hot, I can get you a full ride, that's, that's just a conversation. But that's a part of the network that I have within the fraternity. I can call college presidents and say, hey, I have a kid up here in Nashua who has this G. P. A., and he needs a, he needs a scholarship, can you, can you, can you get him there? Send him home. Those are the relationships I have.
All right.
Now, I'm not boasting, but I'm, this is the work of the fraternity has given me the opportunity to do that. Now, I, I am, I'm the ultra alpha, I'm the super alpha, because everybody doesn't get to go at his pin, okay? Everybody does it. So I'm not saying that everybody as a member can, can do that, that's, that's not true. But I, I try to, to use the access that I have to help other people. My, 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 my family, let me tell you how it's benefited me. And in the African-American community, we, we have a, a sort of traditions where, you know, when, when people pass away, we, we do a couple of things. We bring chicken, we bring potato salad, and then, you know, we drop a little money off, right? This is what, this is what happens, okay? So when my, my late mother passed away, we got plenty chicken, plenty potato salad, and money. We sat back and said, okay, this is a thousand dollars that we have right here, that's just people giving us, right? Instead of saying, okay, let's go pay a bill, or let's go do this, we sat back and said, okay, who can we give it to? So I had a former student who was a senior at Cashmere High School. My former student, I went to my family, I said, let's create a scholarship in my mother and my dad's name, and let's give it to her. But that, that's where the fraternity comes in. Because, you know, I was a boy when I became a member, but after I became a member, I became a man. And boys don't act like men. They, they don't do the same things that men do. Let me just tell one more story, and I know I'm getting it going on and on, y'all know I can talk. I remember taking my son to Little League Baseball, I, I used to coach Little League Baseball, my son. We're getting out of the car, and this lady comes to me and she says, sir, can you tie my shoes? my shoes? And I look at her and I say, excuse me? Can I tie your shoes? She said, yeah, can you tie my shoes? And so my instincts, as a father, are to say, okay, son, come here. So I told my son to come closer to me, because I didn't know what was going on, because this is not a question that somebody is gonna ask you, okay? It's just not. So he comes closer, and I said, man, what is, what do you, what do you need again? She says, I need you to tie my shoes for me. I say, okay. What's, you know, it was just strange for me. I said, okay. She said, let me tell you why I'm asking you. She says, I've been driving a bus all day. She says, as you can see, I'm overweight, and I honestly cannot bend down and tie my shoes. This is a real story. And I'm sitting here trying to process this, what she's asking me, and then she points to a young man who's about 20 feet away, and she says, you see that, that guy over there? I asked him, and he laughed at me.
Oh.
And I, I, I reflect on that and say, you know what? If I was that young man, I probably would have laughed too. Cause that's what boys do. They're in, they're, they're inexperienced, they don't have the types of experiences to appreciate situations like this. Because you never know when it's gonna be you that needs your shoes tied. Because I know my dad would say to me, hey, man, I never, I, you know, I ain't thinking, when I got this, this old, I would be able to, you know, I'm thinking I'd stick and do the same things I was doing when I was your age. When you get older, you, you, you can't do anything, the things that you used to do. That's just a fact. I don't get up as, as, as quickly anymore as I can. That's what happens with age, right? And that's the same thing that we have to understand, that people need help. But hey, to, 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 to kind of round the story out, the fraternity put that in me to help that lady. I credit that, the type of work that I'm doing in the frat with doing those kind of things. That's, that's something that I, that, I, I, I would never forget that kind of situation. Because before I became a member, I would have never helped that lady. Just never would. I would have been immature. I would have been immature.
Thank you. And I have one last question, but I feel like you've answered it over and over again.
Sure.
So if you feel like you've already done it, you can ignore me.
No, it's okay.
Um, what do you believe are the key components to a healthy work environment? I feel like everything that you've set up to this point has led exactly to what a healthy work environment is, but if you want to summarize for us...
Let me just say, the most important thing is transparency for me.
Yep.
That's most important. It's transparency. Like, we have to be honest with each other. I, I value honesty. I, I value, uh, people having the opportunity to, 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 you know, to, to, to have input, and just to be honest about that, and, and, and coming to the table and saying, okay, this is what we're doing. Transparency is very, very important to me. Being goal-oriented, but most important about a goal is a plan. A plan, a goal without a plan is merely a wish. It's merely a wish. And we are not in the business of wishing. We can't afford to be wishing. We have to put plans and, but goals in place that have plans to make those goals come true. And so definitely, um, being transparent and, and being goal-oriented and developing a plan to succeed. But, um, with, with, with that strategic planning, guys, is, is backwards thinking, is, you know, what is the outcome that we want to achieve? Like, we have to understand what our end goal is. It's planning with the end in mind. If we don't know what it is that we're trying to achieve, then we're working blind. So let's, let's figure out, okay, what it is, what is it that we want to do? What, what is it, at the end of the day, when we, we get this, how do we know that we're successful because we, we, we did this? Okay, now, we've established that, now let's go back, what do we need to do to get there? That's how, yeah, that's strategic planning. That's strategic planning. Um, that, that's one of the things I hope, you know, that, that we will engage with. Um, I hope as a, as a, as a team, that we will commit to, you know, meeting quarterly in retreats. We'll, we'll, we'll get to know each other better. Uh, I, I, I would love to plan some of those with you. I would love to facilitate. I, I love, I love, I love that kind of stuff. I love team building. I want, I want to get to know you, I want, I want you to know me. Uh, I want Ms. Johnson, I want you to invite me over for coffee, we can talk. Um, you know, you can talk in your Texas ac-, uh, your, uh, New York accent, I can talk in my Texas accent.
I'll learn your accent pretty soon.
You're, you're learning, right? And, and, and we can, we can engage, and we can, we can dialogue. I think those, those types of things are important for teams to, to be effective. Um, you know, I, 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 I have some, some of you guys that I, 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 I like, I like all of you, but I love some of you. You know, I love Ms. Johnson, and she's become my favorite. Um, you know, it's, it's just, I don't know, I, I, I love the motherly type. She seems like the mother to me. Uh, so, uh, I just, but, but that's, that's what I'm about, though, that is honestly what I'm about. I'm about team and getting to know you guys. And I say that, you know, in, 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 in being funny, but I really mean that, that I want to get to know you much better, uh, and, and all of you guys. I want to get to know you, and that's important for me. So, um, just, just looking for that opportunity, looking forward to the opportunity. And honestly, thank you for this opportunity. This is, this has been a blast. I always say, you know, every interview, you're interviewing for your next job. Like, if this doesn't work out, I'm that much better for the next one. And I, I strongly believe that. I strongly believe that. I know when I get in the car, my dad is gonna say, hey, how you think it went? You know, hey. You know, I know he's gonna ask me. I know he is, you know, and, and, and...
Tell us the truth, is he gonna tell you what you did wrong?
But you know what? But you know what? I know what he's, what he's not gonna say. He's not gonna tell me what I did wrong. He's not gonna tell me what I can improve. Well, he's not, that's not what his job is. He knows his job. His job is to sit there.
That's why he's a wonderful father.
No, my parents have always had my back.
Oh.
They've always had my back.
Wonderful.
And so, um, you know, it, it's, it's, it's one of those things where, when you know you have people that are, that have always held you up, he's, he's gonna continue to hold me up. I, I know that for a fact.
Wouldn't it be wonderful if every child in the world had a father like that?
Now, it wasn't always like that. No, it wasn't. Let's be clear.
Okay.
Let's be clear. No, 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 that, that, that's, that's where that growth and development has occurred, right? Because even, you know, uh, uh, you know, as a, as, in, in high school, my junior year, I was a sharpshooter. When I, on basketball, he'll tell you, I used to make it rain on that court. Like, there, I didn't have any limits on the three-point line, it was going in. But, you know, I, I hit a wall where I couldn't get anything to go in. And then he would provide that coaching, you hear him on the sideline, you need to do this. And you get in the car, it's like coaching session. So it wasn't always like that. It wasn't. You know, but, but, you know, but, but the good thing about parents and parenting is, as your kids grow, you grow. You grow. My parents used to be the hardest thing on, on what I say, on the north side of Houston. That's where we lived. It was, my dad was the hardest thing. When he became a granddad, oh, he became soft as pudding. Okay? But, but that's what, but he knows his role. He doesn't have to be that way, you know, he did his part, right? He can sit back and be pawpaw. And that's what he does. So he knows his role. He knows his role. So I, again, guys, I appreciate you. I really do. I, I enjoyed it. I, I've enjoyed it every time I've been here. You have a lovely town. And, um, you know, this is a great experience for me. Uh, and just, you know, whatever decision you make, I know it will be in the best interest of kids. I'm very confident in that.
Can I just say something? Dad, do you want to say something here?
No. No. All right. Well, Dr. Robinson, thank you so much. What, can I ask one follow-up?
Yes.
All right. Sorry, I just have one follow-up to, um, talking about a healthy work environment. And that is that, um, in this district, we've been having some, um, issues with feelings of trust, um, over time. Um, I think COVID has exacerbated that, the contracts exacerbated that. Um, so I guess my question is, one, um, how do you foster that sense of trust in an organization? And then, two, um, Semay had mentioned this today earlier, um, our state passed a divisive concepts law that took effect this year. Um, and that's what it's called, divisive concepts. Um, so, um, it has a lot of teachers, especially social studies teachers, concerned about, um, their teaching because parents can report them to the state, and it puts their licensure in danger.
Right.
So the first question is, how do you, um, build trust within an organization where that's struggling? And the second one is, um, how do you build trust in an environment where, um, there are laws that are, um, making teachers, um, feel worried?
So trust regardless is built through transparency. Um, developing, um, you know, over a period of time. Like, it takes time to build trust. Trust is not something that's built overnight. Um, and so I, I think that I would be intentional and deliberate in trying to make sure that, um, that we develop those types of relationships through conversation and through the types of actions that we put into place. I think that will be important, especially with the teachers. Um, I want to tell you that, that trust is not just your problem, that's everywhere in this nation. This, the situation, this environment has just worn everybody down. Um, some of the things that we observe today in our schools, you know, with shortage of subs, to morale, administration of ma-, or morale, uh, uh, parents fed up with certain things, that's, that's everywhere. But again, it, it's all about, uh, I said, I said this earlier, how we message things out. Like, we, guys, we, we, we have to make sure that we are the ones who are, who are, uh, who are speaking for us. Nobody can speak for, nobody else should be able to speak for us. They can speak, but people have to know that the district speaks for itself. If the district never says anything, then what that other person says, guess what? That's the gospel. Right? That's the truth. So we have to, we have to be, uh, more effective, I think, you know, and just trying to make sure that we are getting that, that type, that type of information out. So, so to the other question, you know, I, I, I reflected on, on the question earlier today, and I just have to really be honest with you guys in, in, in saying, um, um, how I feel about, uh, certain things. Uh, in case you guys have not noticed, I'm an African-American male, okay? In case you haven't noticed that, I'm not saying, I say that as a joke, of course you guys have noticed that. Um, and, and I, I take, um, the experiences of African-Americans very serious, because I believe it's, it's, it's my history. I grew up in a house, a home where both my parents attended segregated schools. My dad is a graduate of Cashmere in 1967. My mom is a graduate of Cashmere in 1968. As I stated today, Brown versus Board Education is 1954. So 14 years after that particular law went into effect, the schools in, in Houston, Texas were still segregated. Whether it's right or wrong, I'm not even debating that. That's just a fact, okay? I'm also stating the fact that my dad's parents, my mom's parents, neither one of them were educated. All of them did not finish school. So I am only two generations of actually graduating from school. I'm two generations from illiteracy. Let's just, let's just put it out there on the table, okay? We cannot erase things that, from people's memories that have happened. If, if we try to erase things, then we are not doing any justice, because these things happen. That only they happen, to me, they're happening, all, they're continuing to happen, because the more we ignore or try to forget things, all we're doing is repeating a vicious cycle. Unfortunately, some of the things that are occurring right now, they've already occurred before. This is just a repeat. I'm not trying to lecture anybody. Um, I'm not trying to get into the CRT debate. I don't think there's anything to debate with me. My theoretical framework for my dissertation, guess what? Critical race theory. I'm a researcher on that. I know the information. I'm not trying to debate that. But I will tell you this with confidence, I've never been taught a day in my life in a public school classroom about critical race theory. Never. I didn't hear about critical race theory until I enrolled in a doctoral class. Never. So, um, it's, it's very unfortunate. I also live in a state where it's an issue, very similar circumstances. Our district has taken the position of saying, critical race theory is not taught, so it's really not a discussion for us. It's not taught. Um, but when you try to extend it to the feelings of people, that's a gray area that I'm not sure how we can justify that. And that's unfortunate. I, I will tell you that I think we need to teach the facts. We need to just, it happened. As a result, this is what we're doing. That's important, because we can't ignore history, because it happened. It happened. I hope I answered your question. I mean, I'm not trying to get, you know, too fired up, but that's just the reality of the situation.
Yes, you did. And, um, and I appreciate your candor.
Sure.
Ms. Seem?
I, I just, do we want to ask him if he had any questions? He, he may not, because he's obviously been here before, but if he did...
Yeah. Do you have any questions for us?
So, so President Bishop, thank you again for having me. Um, I honestly, uh, don't have any, any questions. I think I am a, um, a, a veteran at this thing now, unfortunately, where, you know, I'm just, I'm just looking forward to you guys, you know, making a decision. I, I want what's best for Nashville. I really do. I'm, I'm all about kids. So again, whatever that decision is, that, that is perfectly fine with me. As I told you the last time, you know, um, I, I had the, the lapel with the red wagon, and I mean that. I hope you guys remember that.
Mm-hmm.
I hope you guys remember that, that, you know, you can sit in the wagon all you want, but there, there's nobody there to pull it, that, that wagon is useless. And the, the next superintendent of this district has to be prepared to pull that wagon.